Dear Lord, we're coming to you this back here now with Lord God. We're about to perform this business, Lord God, for the city of Windsboro. We ask you to lead us, God, and help us make the right decision for the betterment of this community and this city. All these things we actually, in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rexon Murphy. Ms. Kate Cupp. President. Mr. John Dumas. Captain. Mr. Craig Gill. Down. Mayor Jackie Johnson. Here.
We're meeting for the purpose of a special meeting to discuss two items. First item is Resolution Number 14-03-09, Emergency Repair to Radio Communication System.
Counsel, what we have here, this was something that's been going on since back around November, we started having this problem. And it really started when the cold weather got here. That's when we noticed the problem. We actually didn't have any radio communication amongst our crew. This is for our department, City Hall, and to our utility, public work. So we got the company down here to look at, thought it was just our equipment sometimes. If it's too cold or too hot, that repeater equipment don't function properly. So we went to check, everything was good there. We've got the Monroe Communications down here to look at it. They thought it may be something with the coax connector up there. They said the antenna looked like it's got a little lean to it. I don't know if it's wind or something. The bracket is broke or something. We don't know until we get up there. So it went back to working good. But then back here about a month ago, it went to T-toe, just basically out. And we're doing well in what we call the talk about frequency, where we're not even going through the repeater, which is going from radio to radio, which is not any good for us. We stay on telephone more than we do radio. You can't talk one to other. So we got this price. And you'll see the price, one page is from Monroe Communications. That is for the coax antenna fittings and all it would take to replace what we have now with new radio antenna and coax. And the reason you see a second page on here from cable radio, this is a company that actually will do the climb of the tower. And the reason that's not on the bill with, on the proposal with Monroe Communications, they'd have to charge us more because they'd have to put them under their insurance. So we're just going to separate it out, and this way it saves us a little money. Now, this total amount of the equipment is going to be, they don't go ahead and order the equipment. The antenna, coax, and everything have it here because the folks that climb these towers are so expensive to get. So you've got to charge them. We didn't have it, and they climbed, and said we needed it, they're going to charge us $2,400 now, and then they charge us another $2,400 later. So why am I understanding, a man told me, if they climb it, and they get up there and they can repair what's there and everything's fine after inspecting the cable all the way, then we won't have to pay all this $3,700. But if we have to replace all of that, then that's, the maximum should be right there.
So this is like the maximum?
Yes.
What would we be putting these phones from, on the CBR?
They would be coming from the sales tax.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to make an amendment?
We would.
We would have to make an amendment?
Yeah, we did.
If I may direct this question to Skipper. You'd mentioned you spend a lot of time on the telephone more than the radio. The telephones that our employees have, are they paid far by the center? They're not. Okay.
So you say y'all doing cellphone communications now?
I do, I do. Have to get hooked up a lot because from walkie-talkie to walkie-talkie, you can't, you can't talk maybe three-quarters to a mile. From trucks, radios to walkie-talkie, or truck to truck, you can talk about five miles a day. But that's about the limit.
And then there's.
And that's not real clear. Sometimes City Hall, they talk to somebody's on the walkie-talkie, they can't hear. And if they call City Hall, walkie-talkie, City Hall can't hear either.
That's where they're working.
Okay. So he said they get up there, and it has to be, this is the max, if it has to be everything repaired, that's the max.
Right, yes.
But then until they get up there. And the second bill, as far as the company, that's going to do the tower climb.
Actually does climb the tower, yeah. That's why you see two separate invoices.
Tower's located where?
Over at the end of Harvard Street and Pope intersection.
Now, what is this, it's at the bottom, it's a labor two install equipment?
Okay, some of this hardware has to be installed by the Monroe Communications themselves inside the regular room.
Okay.
Well, city can't operate without communication.
That is true.
First place we're doing the budget.
Well, no. Do we amend the, we don't amend the budget first, do we? Anywhere.
The resolution is, is to amend the budget to include this, so it covers the budget.
Yeah.
And it would just be listed under capital outlay because it is an equipment purchase?
Yes.
For communications.
So under capital outlay.
Mayor, I make a motion to, to accept Resolution 14-03-09 for the emergency repairs to the communication system.
It's been properly moved, so accept. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That the record reflects that it was unanimously approved. Thank you. Item number two, ordinance number nine, six-two, Windsboro Rubber Plant.
Tab, you have to. I have copies of it.
Good luck, God.
This is not a contract. This is not.
Yeah, that's all against the company contract.
Yeah. And that's what the ordinance says. And again, what we're here for tonight is to discuss the rubber plant resolution, transfer the equipment, Craig, Kate. And maybe Billy can give us.
Yeah, I'll, what this is at the last council meeting that.
I prepared something to give you guys. I think Elton had sent a resolution. I just corrected it a little bit, just in case y'all wanted to pass.
And if I may address the council briefly, Tab produced the contract at the last council meeting. And upon our company's review of the contract, as Tab put forth, we would like a couple, to the council to consider a couple of changes to the contract that Tab presented. The two changes that we would like is under the conditions, the equipment remaining at the plant location in the city of Windsboro for a period of four years instead of 10 years because that ties with our DEQ processing permit. We cannot say we're going to be there longer than the DEQ will allow us a permit at this point. So we would still like that tied to that permit and go to four years instead of 10 years. And also to strike from the agreement that the city of Windsboro must approve any security agreement or whatnot with the, within the contract. For that's our, once, I mean, that's us trying to conduct business, and we don't need this, we don't need to waste the city's valuable time by us trying to conduct our business and every time we have something come up, having the city have to get involved with it. We don't need to waste y'all's time dealing with that. That's just something that we need to be able to do to run our business and that y'all don't need to be worrying about every time we come up with, we were trying to come up with financing or whatever. So those are the two amendments to the contract that we would like the city to consider is, instead of 10 years, four years, with the condition that we would, in all good faith, renew the, attempt to renew the permit at the end of the four-year time period, which we're planning on doing anyway. But we can't say what the Louisiana DEQ is going to say, whether or not we get that permit. So we would like it at the end of four years instead of 10 years and to strike the approval of the financing from the city. Those are the two amendments that we would like this council to consider.
Mr. Elton, did you, we talked about while back this came before, was that we wanted the time frame a little longer. We knew that your, your, your permit was for four years. Y'all renew every four.
Well, we renew every five.
Every five.
But we are currently one year in to the latest renewal, so we have four years remaining. We have until December of 2017. That is when the permit ends, our current permit ends in 2017.
And we, that's what we discussed the last time, but some we wanted it right here too or some in the long term? Even though I know the state's still, that's still that fucking state?
I can't, I can't make any commitment beyond that. Because if we do not have a tire shred permit, it may not be economically sound to stay here.
But I'm saying in good faith, Paul, you know what I'm saying? In good faith.
And we, we'll put in there that in good faith, we will attempt to renew the permit. We will make that statement, and the permit ties us to the city of Windsboro. But if the state does not grant us a permit, then we can't say what we're going to do if we don't have a permit to operate, the tire shred permit. Okay? We will put in there that we will have, in good faith, at the end of the current permitted time, reapply for an extended permit. Okay? But we have already given the city 10 years and two years beyond what the original grant was of grant, and are willing to stay for another, until the current permit is up, which will give the city 16 years when the original grant was just for 10. So you will already gain six years on the original grant agreement.
But the point that we're looking at right here is jobs that we've locked up. It's not about, it's not about the time that you've been here, it's the time that you continue to do those jobs that you now live here.
I know. But again, I can't commit to anything beyond four years, even in good faith, because I can't say what the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality is going to do. I can't tie myself, our company is not willing to tie itself in beyond what our existing permit is because we don't know what we're going to have to do at the end of those four years if that permit is not renewed.
Okay, so tell me this right here. Let's say the contract is not renewed.
Mm-hmm.
All right? We try to own that equipment to you. What happens to that equipment at the end of that four years?
We would have to evaluate at the end of those four years, the economic viability of leaving the plant in the city of Windsboro, or if it makes more economic sense to move the plant to another location.
So can we get that right? That you still continue to leave that plant near Windsboro, not move to another location?
No, because I've got to look at the economic feasibility of it if we don't have a tire shred permit. That's the point. If we don't have the tire shred permit to where we are getting financing from the state for the amount of pounds that we process, and we are being underwritten by the state through that tire processing permit, okay? And we're getting reimbursed for pounds that we produce, it may not be economically feasible to leave the plant here. We may have to relocate to another state or another city where we can process and get some reimbursement from the state and grant money.
You see, that's not going to be feasible for us with the constituents who are losing those jobs. So I'm just trying to say, still, we're trying to meet each other in the middle.
And I'm, I'm trying to meet you in the middle by committing to four more years. Okay? Because that's what I'm currently permitted for, staying here for four more years. I can't commit beyond that because I don't know what's going to happen in four years. If you can guarantee me that we would get our grant, our permit renewed, by the losing an Department of Environmental Quality four years from now, when we have to reapply, I could maybe commit for longer than that time period. But I don't know what's going to say that. Say at that point.
So let me ask you this question right here.
All I can say is that we are going to reapply.
If everything is hanging in the balance for those four years, would that be, is that a big constraint, say, well, that's something we can look at, transferring you this equipment in four years? Right now, you said you need to make a necessary adjustment to it to be in our operating. Is that something we can look at, say, well, we're looking at it four years, we'll pin that with your contract, say, y'all get renewed on that contract, we can transfer that equipment over here?
We have already met our commitment for that equipment, one time. We are extending beyond that already on the jobs that we have provided this community. We feel that it is a reasonable request to tie this to our permit and have it in four years, and in four years, we would, we are going to, in faith, good faith, reapply for the permit. Okay? Larry and Fred, I will say this, Larry and Fred aren't getting any younger. In four years, they may have retired, and somebody else may be running the company. That's another reason we can't tie this beyond what our current permit is, is because we don't know what the future holds. I don't have a crystal ball. I do know that I have a permit to operate for four more years within the city of Windsboro, and we plan on providing jobs to the city of Windsboro as long as I am here.
But if you're making a profit, and you admit this up there to make a profit, if you're making a profit.
Did you, have you looked at our financial statement that we put in there? Right now, we ain't making a profit.
But you were putting that, the last time you before, you said the contract that you had that was, that was pinned.
That we have, that we're currently in, should get us eventually to where we are making a profit. And in four, four years from now, if we're making a profit, it's going to make economic sense to stay here. But again, in four years, if we're not making a profit, it may not make economic sense to stay here if we don't have a permit. Again, I don't know what I'm going to be doing in four years from now. I think it is a reasonable request to consider the four years because that's already, that's guaranteeing four-year worth, four years worth of jobs, more, and that would give you 16 on the initial $1.6 million grant, which was originally only for 10 years. So we committed to that 10 years. We've done that, we've exceeded that 10 years by two years already, and we'll be extending it by another four, so that's 16 years now on that initial grant that was originally only supposed to be 10 years, to get something that we should have already received two years ago. I feel, we feel it's a very reasonable request for the 10 years, for the, for the four years. And that's all that we can commit to because that's all we have a permit for.
So we got one to meet, we can work in there.
That's, that's, there is no more middle. There's no more, I can give you because I have, I don't know where else to go. I mean, I don't know what else I can say other than it's dependent on our renewal of the permit, which you have a clause in there, depending on the renewal of the permit. Okay? If you would put in here that at the end of four years, we renew, and if we are not renewed, the equipment still reverts to us, then we might be willing to do that.
Let me ask you this question right here. What things, what factors are pinned on, let me better rephrase it this way. What factors would the state, what things could happen that the state would not renew your contract? If some things happened? I knew you had a, is that plan inspected? They come in?
They come in and inspect every year.
Okay.
I don't know of any reason why the state would not renew our permit at this time, simply because we are doing things better than any other tire shredder in the state. Our record keeping is better, we have better controls, we have higher end-of-use products than any other process and processor, and we are actually selling product where the other processors are just basically landfilling. So we're, we're actually getting the tires out of the state and into higher end-of-use. I don't know of any reason why the state would not.
But if you don't pass those inspections, let's say, I'm, I'm not saying that you would, y'all would do that. But what if you were purposely, if you know those things, that what the state's going to look for, I got to have these things, that's.
Because if we don't pass.
To renew my contract.
Because if we don't go, if we don't pass the inspections, they come and arrest us. If we don't live up to the conditions of our permit and try to pass those inspections, they come and arrest us. When they come do those inspections, they got guys coming in, there were guns and handcuffs. They're not just coming in with an auditor and pencil vision. There are inspectors coming in with guns and handcuffs, and if you are too far out with compliance, they slap the cuffs on you, they take you to jail. And I'm not going to jail. And I'm not, I'm not kidding with you. They will arrest us if we don't try to comply with our permit. So we're not going to purposely do anything to get us out of compliance where they want to renew. But I can't guarantee that the state's going to renew. I have, I am relatively confident that if I put together a good enough permit when I put in the renewal, because we are going to need to make some revisions to our current permit when we, when we do renew. We are going to ask for some changes in the permit, and they may have a problem with the changes that we're doing. That may come up. That may be part of the reason, is if we're saying we want to have a higher inventory storage of tires, or we want to have a larger storage area, or something like that, in some of the changes that we're thinking about making when we renew our permit next time, if that comes up and they have a problem with those changes, then we might either have to revise or something like that, or might just deny us our permit. We don't know.
Are your financials tied to that permit?
No. Financials are not tied to the permit. The, it's, it's, the financial statements, other than a financial security bond that we have to put there for, in case the company closes and leaves a mess, that the state then uses to go in and clean it up. We have to keep a security bond there for that. But otherwise, our finances are not tied to our permit. So again, I don't see any reason why we're not going to be here five, six, seven years from now, but I can't tie myself to that beyond what the current permit is. Our company can't do that. We're operating handcuffed that way.
A quick question, Elton.
Yeah, great.
And I just, this is the first time I've seen the financials, so I'm just glancing at it, but, and I don't know if it's a market trend or what's going on, but just my glance at the financials. Why would this company want to stay in Windsboro?
Well, like I say, right now, we have a permit that ties us here. Our tire shred permit states that we have to stay in Windsboro.
Right.
Okay? Up until this, up until this issue, up until this issue that we are dealing with, we have enjoyed our time working with the city and working in Windsboro. The rent that we have on that facility is wonderful. We love the contract that we have with the city for staying in that facility, for, especially now that we have invested $1.3 million in that facility to improve it. We've got it to where it's a functional facility for us now, and we still have some more improvements we want to make. But we've got too much invested in the city, it takes too long to move the plant, we have orders to meet. If we pick up and move, we're going to be down for two to three months, and we've got too much on order right now to shut down for that long, that long of a period of time. So again, we have no, we don't want to move. We want to stay here. All we want is the equipment that should already be ours, and should have already been given to us at the end of the 10-year grant that it was purchased with. Again, the city has no money tied up in this. The equipment, the, the city did not outlay any money for that equipment. It was purchased by state funds through a grant program, and all we're asking for, and that was one of the incentives for our company to come to Windsboro, like you said. Why would we want to stay here? Well, why did we want to come here to begin with? Because we all had this $1.6 million in grant money to help us build a plant, and we were going to get this equipment at the end of those 10 years.
But you also anticipated a profit.
We also, and we also anticipated a profit in that length of time, and the economy turned south, and we kept higher payroll dollars to maintain our grant agreement than we had to maintain for those 10 years, which is one reason we're in the financial state we're in now, because we were tied to keeping this number payroll dollars so we could get this equipment at 10 years. And so for 10 years, we operated at a loss because we were paying more people than we had orders for.
For 10 years?
For probably five of those 10 years, we operated, we didn't have enough orders to justify the amount of people we had to employ to meet the grant agreement.
So how many years actually have you had, in the 10-year period that you've had this contract, how many years have you actually had a cash flow that allowed you to, to even break even and to come out feeling black?
I do not know the answer to that question because I'm not privy, I'm not privy to all the financials. I'm not high enough in the company, I don't get involved in money matters, in money matters that much. I am just the guy that they, that tries to liaise with everybody.
We need somebody that can tell the truth, because we, we need to know the whole story. And, you know, in, in essence, by having the whole story and knowing the whole story, then we can make a better judgment.
Well, you've seen, you've seen the financials for our most recent year, and you're seeing that we were operating last year at a loss.
When we asked you this point-blank question, you still became ins, and that's not true. Because you know, you know that you've operated for 10 years. You say now, for 10 years, basically, you have received a profit. All that, all the people that gather a little bit of the money is our, is our employees. And you said you gave that to them because, you know, you had to maintain this, you know, this, this level of payment. But now, was it level, even with the economy and your cash flow statement, there should have been, there should have been a level or a point where you would have been able to see a profit at some point in time in so many years, even if it was a dollar, you know, a dollar. You know, my point to you is this, you know, we suffered too, because there were times when you did not even make your payment. And because of that, was it because of not being able to cash flow, or was it because you were paying these, making these payments to our people? You know, we don't know. And what years was on? Then we come, if we compare the years of the profit compared to the years of the loss, then which one supersedes the other?
I know that there have been more years of loss than there have been of profit.
And which ones are they?
I do not know.
I'd like to hear what Billy has to say.
Well, you know, we've been going over this issue for, for many, many months now. And what we have done is we have, we have had a discussion with DEQ, EPA, and things, and he's exactly right. The permit is issued for a five-year permit, which they have four years left on the contract right now. The, I think it's, I think it's important that you understand that they can, they can shut this plant down at any time they want to shut it down, even though the permit is here, but they would, at the end of that permit period, the security bond is to make sure that, that if they close down for good, then the security bond makes sure that you have an environmental claim slot. Okay? That's what security bond is for. And for any, any reason whatsoever, if, if, and Rex, I'd like to say that, that we're talking about transferring the equipment immediately with this ordinance, not at the end of four years. They're saying that they need, they need operating and need the equipment repaired, and they need collateral to do that. That's evident of the, the financial statement that you go through there. Now, the appraisal of the equipment, we look at the appraisal equipment, and basically, I did some little bit of research, and I was saying that, and Mr. Tab, Attorney Singer and I had discussed it, and they are pretty well online with the appraised value at around $500,000. Under the contract, under the original contract, then this piece of, this equipment, and when they first went in there, they sold this and made special, made special exceptions to put $1.6 million into this company for 18 employees. That had never been done before, and has never been done since. In most cases, and before, it would have had to been five times that amount. And, and since, it would probably have to be 10 times that amount to get that large of a grant, by far as employment is concerned. We, at, at the present time, you know, we're, we're maintaining anywhere from five to 21 employees, depending on the situation. Under the original agreement, they were going to pay us $2,000 a month with two, four, two four-year options to go with that, or two five-year options, which we are in that second option period, and the contract with the city has not been renewed. The, the original contract stated that they would maintain and keep the equipment under that, under the original contract in good and sound repair. And we have heard that, that it's going to take $150,000 to bring that equipment back to good and sound repair. to bring that equipment back to good and sound repair, to, to bring it to where it's supposed to be. They are liable for that under the contract, if I'm not mistaken, am I right, Attorney Singer?
That's true.
And, uh, so if, if, we talking about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, their appraisal, their appraisal, uh, of the equipment, and you add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're talking about six hundred thousand dollars for the equipment, okay? Then in vain. So therefore, if, if the city transfers the equipment right now, you would be giving them supposedly with the improvements, six hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment in vain for assets that they could go borrow money against to, to get that done. But, but if they close the doors today, and, and we ask them to make, before they do, they're going to have to, we give them six months, say, if we gave them six months to meet their contractual agreement, they would have to bring that equipment to a good repair and get that hundred and fifty thousand dollars back into that equipment to make your equipment where it's supposed to be today. And I'll, I'll answer any questions that you may have. It's a decision that the city council has to make. Uh, it's not my decision. Uh, and, and, and we keep, we keep hearing that, that they're two years over the contract and that we supposed to give them the equipment. Well, that's never been there, uh, from the beginning, that never has been there. So we, we need to not be blinded by that fact. They know that. That is a fact that they know.
Yes. I'm sorry.
In looking at the financials, I see in two thousand and twelve where they were negative four hundred thousand. Two thousand and thirteen, they're negative eight thousand.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand plus dollars. We give them another four hundred thousand plus a hundred and fifty thousand, that's going to make somewhere around one point five million, if I do the math, in debt. And all good conscience to the people of the city of Winsboro, I cannot do that, but I think it's time for us to just say, we're not going to do that. We're not going to give them this equipment today or two years or five years from now. It's not in the contract, we're not bound to it, and I think it's time that we just, we stop this mouse chasing game and let's just say we're not going to do it. And that's my opinion. And I will be happy to put that in the form of a motion.
Is that a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Well. Is there a second to the motion?
What's the?
The motion is that we do not give them the equipment.
So that's a negative motion. Can you make a negative motion?
No, she'd make an emotion not to.
To not, to not do.
Quite.
Okay.
Not to transfer the equipment.
Not to transfer the.
Will you?
She said the word dotted.
Yeah. A second.
It has been moved to second, not to transfer the equipment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposes? At the record reflect that it was unanimously approved, approved, not to transfer the motion. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.